Clicking it now.
We are live.
All ready? Good morning and Happy New Year to each and every one of you. And at this time, we will turn it over to our very capable city clerk.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January 5th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Leroy Lumpkin, Marine Baptist Church, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we truly thank you for this opportunity to serve this community, Father, to have this day of governance. Father, we pray that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we go through this day. And Father, that we look forward into this new year, not looking back, but Father, remembering the lessons that we've learned from the past year, moving forward with hopefulness, truth, with honesty and integrity. Father, we ask that you would just continue to bless each and every member of this city council and the city administration and our mayor's staff. Father, we just ask that you would just continue to bless this city as we move forward to make Mobile even better than it has been. Father, these things we pray, we ask in Jesus' name, for His name's sake. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We ask that you would continue to remain standing in observance of a couple of moments of silence, and we'll hear from our respective colleagues now.
Mr. Richardson does as well.
Yes, ma'am.
First off, I would like to ask for you all to have a moment of silent prayer for the family of Fred Wolf. Pastor Fred Wolf, who died due to COVID complications on January 3rd. He was hospitalized just after Christmas. You all probably know the name. Pastor Fred Wolf was a longtime pastor at Cottage Hill Baptist Church here in Mobile for 25 years. When he retired, he went on to found another church in the area, Luke 4:18 Fellowship. While Pastor Wolf was at Cottage Hill Baptist, membership there grew from 800 members to 2,800 members. Pastor Wolf's ministry has spanned 63 years from multiple churches and in multiple states. So again, I just ask that you all would remember his family in a moment of silent prayer.
Mr. President, I would like to continue this silent prayer for Comer P. Norwood, was a longtime Deacon at the Stone Street Baptist Church, an honorable man, born in Marvin, Alabama, came, father died early, raised us, mother with other siblings, moved to Mobile, got on with AT&amp;T, and became a specialist that was dispatched all the way around the world to repair ships. And he passed away, and his funeral would be Saturday at Christ Temple Church, 801 Pedigree Street. Like for us to honor him with a silent prayer.
And we could remember both of those great Mobilians in moments of silence. Thank you.
Roll call. President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rule.
Again, good morning. In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's supplemental emergency proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at City Hall. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is still able to present comments to the council by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@cityofmobile.org, and she will disseminate those comments to all members of the council. And they will also be included in the meeting minutes. As always, the meeting is live stream and can be viewed through the city's website or on the council's Facebook page. If there are any speakers during this particular meeting, each one will be granted three minutes to make their commentary. At the end of two minutes, a bell will sound indicating that you have 60 seconds to kind of wrap up your presentation. These are the rules for this particular meeting. And again, we're appreciative of your interest in your municipal goal.
Approval of minutes of December 22nd.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Great job, as always.
Communications from the mayor.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. To see everybody this morning. You know, yesterday, we had a memorial service and the family had the graveside service for Paul West. You know, we are going to miss Paul tremendously. I know that you will too. The city of Mobile is a better place for his life, the contributions that he's made over a long period of time. Knowing that the city council was interested in doing a proclamation for him, our resolution, I would call on Joel Daves to go ahead and read that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution sponsored by the mayor and the entire city council. Whereas the city of Mobile has lost one of our very best and most consequential leaders with the passing of Paul Charles West, Sr. And whereas Paul was born in Seattle, grew up in Huntsville, earned two undergraduate degrees and a law degree from the University of Alabama, and then an LLM degree in taxation, also from the university. And whereas his decision to come to Mobile, along with his breadth and depth of knowledge in finance, law, and business, and his commitment to this community, had a tremendous impact on some of our key businesses and the city itself and will for decades to come. And whereas, after years of service as a volunteer advisor to the city on the citizens' Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, Mayor Stimson recruited Paul to put his years of expertise to work turning around the financial condition of the city. And whereas, his work with the city was integral in paving the way for the unparalleled progress we have seen over the last several years, which has set Mobile on a path to success for which we, as a city, are forever grateful. And whereas, all the while, he served as a friend and mentor to so many, and also found time to support important organizations throughout our community and state, including the USS Alabama Battleship Commission Camp Rapa Hope, St. Mary's Home for Children, and the University of Alabama President's Cabinet. And whereas, Paul leaves behind his devoted wife of 33 years, Linda McCarthy West, his children, Paul Charles J. West, Jr., Caroline West, Dennis, and Colden Bernard West, a sister, Sharon K. West, and a host of other relatives and friends. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Mobile, Alabama, that we, the members of the Mobile City Council and Mayor Sandy Stimson, who hereby extend our deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences to the West family, and also profound gratitude for his service to the city and his friendship. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Daves. Well put. So going forward, we have already made two appointments, filling part of the void that was created by Paul's death, and that's by appointing Jim Barber as the acting chief of staff and Seiya Sapp as the acting finance director. As we look at an organizational chart, there were a lot of reports to Paul West simply because of his breadth of knowledge and his leadership skills. There's probably no way that you will find somebody that would have, be able to grasp all the things that Paul was actually doing. So in the next few days, we'll be looking at who reports to whom, and in doing so, we will make some adjustments, and we'll certainly alert the city council of that. But we have got to figure out how we're going to, you know, keep things running, which I'm confident that the team can do that, but it will require a different direct reports. So as that comes out, we will apprise you of it. I've got three items on that I'd like to talk about today. One is the ALDOT started work on the Perch Creek Bridge Replacement Project. If you recall, the city contributed $3 million from its current NIFWIF GUF Environmental Benefit Fund. That's, this project is going to support the hydraulic restoration of Perch Creek. It will promote the environmental restoration of that system and addresses stormwater runoff issues. The bridge will remain closed to traffic, and ALDOT has put detours in place for the duration of that, of the bridge part of the project, as probably going to make traffic be rerouted for a period up to the fall of 2021. So anyway, we look forward to that project as an aside. I believe that once the bridge is raised, that smaller kayaks and so forth will be able to, you know, use that part of the waterway for kayaking. Second thing I would like to speak to is Ziegler Boulevard, and I can see that Councilwoman Gregory is smiling, and should be. 20 years, maybe, Councilwoman?
A little bit more than that, but yes.
Anyway, I'll remind you, this is a $24 million project. It's an 80/20 split. It's using federal MPO money, plus some, which, the federal MPO money is actually administered by the state, but then we have city match of about 20%. Some of that is coming from pay-go. There's been money set aside in years past to do this project, but I know that the people in that area, although there will be a period of time where they're inconvenienced, at the end of the day, it's going to alleviate traffic congestion, it's going to create a safer environment for motorists and pedestrians, and it's also going to check the box on mobility for our bicyclists, pleading, you know, trying to connect all of our major thoroughfares with bicycle trails. Anyway, at the end of the day, this, the widening of Ziegler Boulevard to four lanes will go all the way from Schillinger Road to Forest Hill Drive. Anyway, very excited about that. You'll see that this next part is actually right there at Langin Municipal Park, and there will be some trees that have to be taken down, but I can assure you that ALDOT, the engineers at the city of Mobile, and everybody has worked diligently to save as many of the trees as possible. Anyway, it's a, it's a great day to see that construction get underway. Then the last part really has concerns of vote that the city council will take today. And just from an awareness standpoint, this vote has to do with approving a cultural resource study that would be conducted by the University of South Alabama. And that cultural resource study is actually going to focus on the area where the Africa Town Welcome Center will be built. There's been concern about what has happened in the past on this particular piece of property. So there'll be a geographical survey of the land, there'll be an oral history project and consulting with members of the community, and then there'll be a Phase 1 archaeological survey. What we're trying to do is divert, to divert, or to put to bed any criticism about that we have built the Welcome Center in an inappropriate place. And we look forward to the outcome of that project, and certainly hoping that's something that the city council will approve in today's agenda. And, Mr. President, that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, Happy New Year, and appreciate those updates.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
I would like to ask the mayor a question. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
And when you was talking about the, you know, Africa Town and what's before us today, I'm pretty sure that it's going to pass the council on today, but I know I'm about to put you on the spot, but what is your vision of seeing where Africa Town will be in the next five or 10 years? And for the last couple of weeks, I've been talking about the city of Montgomery, how they have the Hanks Museum, and people from all across the country come into Montgomery and to visit this particular museum. But one thing Montgomery's not doing, they're not really capitalizing the people to stay overnight in their city, because I've been hearing people who are flying to Birmingham, who are flying to Montgomery, excuse me, Atlanta, and they'll drive to Montgomery, and then they'll, you know, leave before night and go back to Birmingham or go back to Atlanta, spend a night, spend their money in their restaurants and et cetera, then fly back home. But what is your, your vision is seeing Africa Town in probably the next, you know, a couple of years to five to 10 years from now? If you're mind.
So Councilman, that's a, you know, that's would be a really long answer, but let me focus on the one part that you were pointing out, having to do with the visitors coming into the city and maybe leaving and really actually spending the bulk of their money in other places. Now, that's why we have Visit Mobile as, you know, integrated into this process of everything that's being done. So the idea is that we want to capture those visitors who are actually in Montgomery, Selma, other parts of the, of the African American trail. As they come to this area, we want to put our best foot forward and make sure that they have a great experience here. And it's really about the visitor experience. So that's, that is why they are involved in it. And so I think that as time goes on, that from a hotel standpoint, you know, today we would have enough hotels, enough, I mean, availability for visitors. It's having, it's making sure that they have other things here that they would like to do in order to keep him, let's say, here overnight. When I think about Africa Town itself and the construction of the Heritage House and the Africa Town Welcome Center, you know, that's all about, let's say, putting our best foot forward to help that experience. But there's a lot of work that has to be done from the rehabilitation of the existing housing that's there. I think ultimately, we will probably see a model area, a small part of Africa Town that could show what the housing looked like, you know, what the trades were back at that time. And I could visualize also there being something under the Africa Town Cochrane Bridge by way of some kind of dockage so that boats could go up to the side of the clotilda. You know, that's four or five points that I touch on, but all of that is, I think, either being discussed, it's being vetted, people are buying into it, and that doesn't touch any of the things that some of our partners in this, like the Smithsonian and the National Geographic, and things that they would like to see done. But that's part of, I think that's part of the vision. And I'm sure that Anitra could give us about a three, a three or four sentences of what the real vision is, but those were just thoughts off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you so much, Joe. It's really just trying to just hear from your standpoint and everything. I appreciate that so much, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, glad to do it.
President Manzi.
Mr. Rich.
Thank you. I would just like to segue back to Paul, and the resolution was excellent, and I will not go into those details, and it, and I hope that's presented to his family, of course. I met Paul a number of years ago on my first term in office, which goes back to the 90s, and, but I got to know him better when he served on the council's committee. When I returned to council in 2010, I was alarmed at the city's spending and our treasury in general, and the council created the committee. It was made up of citizens in the banking industry or taxing or tax law. It was a really good committee. They were very determined, and Paul was, was excellent. And when he became our Director of Finance, that was like, I was so excited under the mayor's initial, the new mayor in 2013. It was really great to see him there, and I just want to say, for me as a councilperson, anytime I called on Paul or wrote a question to the mayor that involved finance, and I'm sure all my colleagues feel the same way, he was very responsive. He gave you information, he would chat with you, and that was something that was really ideal in dealing with city issues, our spending. I'm not saying he totally did this on his own by any means, but he hit the ground running, and I believe he was Gina's appointment, if I'm correct about that. And, because we, we would meet after committee meetings and talk, and Paul was just a wealth of information. It is a great loss to our community. It's, you know, during COVID, it's hard to express those things because of the limitations we have for visiting and hugging people. But I just want to make sure that the community that I represent is aware of how essential he was to our city government and what a loss it means. And I know we have people that are standing up to take that place and to work towards all of the things that Paul set in motion, but I just really wanted to add that, even in light of the resolution, which was excellent. But thank you for giving me that opportunity for my citizens.
Absolutely. Mr. Rich?
Yes. I would like to join, Mr. Rich, and express my condolences to Paul's wife and family regarding his untimely death. I didn't, I did not know Paul way back when. I only met Paul when the mayor placed his name in nominations, nomination to be our finance director. It was a, it was a hard time when the mayor brought him forward. The nation had, we had experienced the worst reception, recession since the Great Depression. And I had reservations, serious reservations about Paul, about voting for Paul. So I asked him to come, come up to my office, and I expressed my reservations about that, if there had been some issues with the company that he left regarding finances, and I didn't want to vote on anybody that I felt who couldn't maintain properly the finances of the city of Mobile. Paul came up, and we had a long discussion with Paul. At the end of that discussion, I was convinced that Paul would do us a good job, and I told Paul, don't let us down. Do not let us down. I'm going to vote for you. Please don't let us down. I'm here to say, Paul did not let us down. He had this temperament where he was cool under pressure. You couldn't make Paul blow up. You could say whatever you want to say, and Paul was going to come across just as even, just as smooth as silk. He was going to give you just the facts. You could take his facts and turn them any way you want to, he was going to stick with the facts. I had nothing but appreciation for Paul, and when he was moved up to acting chief of staff, I can't remember a time that I had called Paul about issues that needed to be handled, that Paul didn't handle. He was not a man of words. He would say, I take care of it. That's it. That's it. He was not giving no sermon, he was not going to preach, he was just going to say what he was going to do. Or he, or he would say, I don't think that's something that we can do. But he, but he still was not going to get off into no long dissertation about, about it. He was just going to stay what it, what the, what the situation was, and that, that's what it was. And I could, I could work with that. I could work with that. So we're going to, we're going to all miss Paul. He was an outstanding man. I had nothing but respect for Paul. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I would like to extend my condolences also to Mr. Paul's family and wife and children, and also to, you know, our mayor, because I know that our mayor had great, you know, confidence in Mr. West. And Mr. Paul, as, you know, Vass and Fred had stated earlier, you know, he was a man of, you know, with great character. I mean, mild, gentle, calm, you know, spoken person. And, you know, as one of my colleagues stated earlier, he was very, you know, responsible. But, you know, they had many good characteristics about himself, but one thing I found out that he was always humble and meek at all times, you know, even when I saw him in the elevator, you know, like he just had like a straight face, but when he saw you, he'd smile, and he'd say, good morning, Councilman, you know. But he would be truly missed, you know, especially, you know, from myself. But then I would like to extend my condolences to the family, and also to the mayor, and many people that have worked with Mr. West throughout this last couple of years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, if I might.
Absolutely, Mr. West.
You know, I, I think that we all have met Paul in a different place in our own time over these last seven years, or in the last 40 years, as it is with some. But there's no doubt, as has been expressed, that Paul was a special character. I met Paul back on the Budget Advisory Committee. He, he had immediate control of that committee and, and complete understanding of our finances. Even then, I had no doubt, when the mayor brought him on, that it was going to be a different time with regard to finances. But let's, let's note two things. One, politicians like to take a lot of credit, and we, the entire Mobile City Council and the mayor, have taken, have taken credit by the public or in claims for work that Paul did. The governor's even got credit for work that Paul did. There's no question that we are where we are because of Paul West. And over the last seven years, I had several meetings with members of administration in the mayor's office, personal request, and I would always provide information, or they would tell me what they were going to talk about. But it wasn't until I got to the office and saw Paul walk in that I knew that this was a serious day, and this was going to be a serious discussion, because Paul, as Fred said, had the facts. And only Paul could put things in order that all of us could understand. I'll miss him, the city's going to miss him, and I, I, as my colleagues have, send condolences to his entire family. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I might.
Absolutely, Mr. West.
I too want to extend my condolences to Linda and the entire family. You've all heard it already, that Paul was on the Budget, Finance, and Taxation Committee, and I do like to take credit for that one, because the way it started was through email. I met Paul via email back when we started talking about raising the one cent sales tax, raising the sales tax by the penny. He and I corresponded many, many times. He was just a wealth of information, and because of that, I decided he was the perfect appointee for, for that committee. And boy, was he. I think it was that wealth of knowledge that really prompted the mayor to look at Paul as his Director of Finances. And I think that was a brilliant choice, Mayor, on your part. Paul was such a wonderful, he was a friend. And, you know, he was always just a wealth of knowledge on, you know, any, any topic, really. And always a gentleman, always a kind word to say, a smile on his face. And, you know, we, we talked a lot about business, of course. But, but within every conversation I had with Paul, there was always, you know, some personal. Just a, you know, a great guy and I'm already getting emotional about it. So at any rate, just extend my condolences and we really will miss Paul. Look forward to working with Jimmy Barber and Celia, of course. But just very thankful for all of the contributions that Paul made for the city. And Mayor, I certainly extend my condolences to you as well.
Mr. President?
Mr. Davis?
I have some comments I'd like to make with respect to Paul, but I'd like to hold my comments until the announcement section of the agenda.
Absolutely, Mr. Davis, if that's your prerogative. I, I would be remiss if I didn't add my own commentary. The, the news of the loss of Paul Charles West just really was a blow to my holiday period. He and I met at his home in the Saltair Community before we were either connected with the City of Mobile. And I was visiting a friend who happens to be a neighbor of his. And he came over and we talked, talked about the school system at that time and some of his ideas relative to the school system. And then to have the opportunity to work with him at Government Plaza. I had the distinction of being his parking lot mate. And many days we'd pull up at the same time or either be leaving at the same time. And he always was careful to ask me about my family, my health, ask me about my family or to inquire about my health. He just was the consummate professional. And everything that we've all said, you know, a lot of times we can add a little, a little extra here, there to persons when we're talking about them. That's not the case with Paul Charles West at all. He, he had that even demeanor and deportment, no matter when you talked with him. Whether you were upset about something, whether it was something that you mutually wanted to work toward, you knew that if Paul West said it, there was some similar effect to it. And if he told you he was going to do something, he did it. And I just, my heart and thoughts go out to his wife, of course, to his children, to everybody that was connected with him. As, as partisan as you may believe he may have been because of his political connections, he let none of that show when it came down to working for the citizens of the City of Mobile. You never would have known what political philosophy he subscribed to. Because he was about, what can we do to maximize these resources in order to accomplish the goal? And while my heart and thoughts go out to his wife and his kids, his children, I want to also say to Mayor Stimson that I know this is a tough personal loss. Because there not, there have not been many meetings of consequence that I've had with Mayor Stimson where Paul West was not there. He just was a great man. We shared the same miller name, Charles Strong name. Similar to Councilman Williams, John Charles. So this is just not a loss for his family and for the 10th floor. It's a loss for this community. And I don't have a doubt that it'll take four individuals to do the work of one Paul Charles West. Godspeed to him. Every year carries a number, and he was a part of that year's number. We don't know when our time is up, but I hope to go out working as hard for others as Paul Charles West did.
President, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, everything you said was heartfelt, absolutely true. You know, Paul never did want any credit for anything. As a matter of fact, he shunned, you know, the kind of the, any limelight, you know, that was always for somebody else. So Councilman Williams, I mean, really, everything that has been said, what we'll do after this meeting is we'll have it transcribed. And I will present it in some form or fashion to the family so that they know your sentiments and your remarks. Because I think it'll be very meaningful to them as they go through the process of grieving their loss. You know, one of the things that wasn't said is that, you know, Paul had such a sense of humor. And it could be a very dry sense of humor. And every now and then he'd put a zinger out there and you're thinking, God, did he really say that? Did he mean it? You know, and of course, then he was just trying to make light of a situation. But, you know, we'll all miss him and the impact that he has made on the city. I think we've all learned something, you know, from, from his character and from his ability to set emotions kind of to the side to try to, you know, focus on the facts at hand. And so Paul was very gifted at being able to do that. As Councilman Richardson said, you know, you could not make Paul stumble no matter what the deal was. But anyway, thank you for your comments. Thank you for the thoughts of condolences for me. You know, Paul was the guy that was right across the hall. And my intercom to Paul was I would holler out my door across the secretary pool to see if he was there. And I'm going to miss being able to do that. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Clerk?
At this time, we have a presentation from the Parks Department, Shonda Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
So I wanted to present, we are doing Parks and Rec is starting their first Employee of the Month. Our Employee of the Month is selected by 15 committee members. We have an employee engagement committee. And so Mr. Monchette Winsett is our first Employee of the Month. He was selected by his peers for his willingness to assist others, his willingness to ensure that tasks are completed within the Eastern Division in which he works. And he's proactive and always willing to make a difference with his team. And so I want to, we have a plaque for him that says Employee of the Month Award, presented to Monchette Winsett. Our core values is customer service, teamwork, and diversity in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated services for January 2021.
Mr. Moore? Congratulations.
No doubt.
And thank you for all of your hard work.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Would, would, would he like to have anything to say?
Yeah, we weren't here for him.
Continue doing the hard work with the City of Mobile.
All right.
All right now.
Well, again, congratulations and Happy New Year to you.
All right, thank you all. Thank you all.
Okay. Adoption of the agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda and that all items listed as essential COVID-19 items be designated as such.
Second?
It probably moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave of noise ordinance on February 14th in Langen Park from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM.
Second?
Probably moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Public hearing today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 1819 Strange Street, 1804 Lacy Street, 1260 Michigan Avenue, and 459 Michigan Avenue.
Is there anyone here, anyone present, that would like to offer any commentary during these particular public hearings? During day one, the public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Joshua Williams doing business as Malibu Transportation Service to operate a sedan service.
Is there anyone here that would like to participate during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to, to want a pure void doing business as True Love Transportation to operate a shuttle service.
Is there anyone present or connected that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to read into the record the document of activities for the 2020 fiscal year for Rebuild Alabama Act, the gasoline diesel fuel excise tax. One, recorded revenues totaling $771,103.33 for fiscal year 2020. Two, no expenditures have been made to date. And three, by resolution number 09-604-2020, adopted August 25th, 2020, the City Council for the City of Mobile adopted its annual transportation plan. Two, expend $1.4 million on Tiger Grant Dr. MLK slash Broad Street. This project is in final design. Plans are to advertise and award the construction contract in the first half of 2020. We have, for non-agenda item, I mean, for agenda items, Reggie Hill regarding 08911, 13916, and 21918.
Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Mr. President, members of the council, to our mayor, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning, Reggie Hill, 1007 Sinister Street, and Happy New Year to, to everyone. Before I begin, I would like to join with the council and administration in recognizing the life of Mr. Paul West. As I posted to social media once learning of his passing, I cannot count on one hand how many times Paul and I may have agreed on policies. Still, it was very disheartening to learn of how he had to leave this place. And while I may not agree with what people have to say, I would defend with every ounce of me their right to say it. And while Paul and I were very different in our approaches to municipal governments, I believe that we all can say without any confusion that we each wanted the best for the City of Mobile. So I want to extend my sincerest condolences to his family and as well to our mayor and the administration. Mr. President, I rise today to address those agenda items mentioned by our city clerk. My intentions ought to be quite brief today. We all know that I have been formally submitting requests now for years. And you, even yourself, Mr. President, have made a request in the recent weeks regarding inventory list. And that has been to Norvell. And so I'm hoping that, while seeing more equipment purchase on the agenda today, I'm hoping that we can move forward with this. So instead, I'm going to publicly articulate my questions and then resubmit them to the city clerk. And hopefully that will bring about an ounce of urgency so that we can have the level of transparency. Regarding 08-911, I just want to thank the administration and council for finally addressing this matter, especially before weather causes it to be more of an inconvenience. This is something that has needed to be done for quite a while there, so I'm glad to see it happening. In reference to 13-916, I'd just like to know, what is the cause of the first change order regarding the Three Mile Creek Initiative? And what is the total cost of this project? And was there any percentage of resources that were grant related or that came from outside of our city's budget? And finally, 21-918, the Africatown survey contract with USA that was mentioned this morning by our mayor. At the previous council meeting, I emphasized the importance of engaging with community members who sustained generations of investments to this particular area and its population of underserved people. Just yesterday, I had the extreme privilege of having a lively discussion with Dr. Karen Jackson, who leads the African American Studies Department at the University of South Alabama. The mayor mentioned an oil history component to this contract, and that is something that he's overseen, and he has reached out to me directly to be a part of that. So it goes to show, and I'm hoping this is a sign to urge our council to ensure that the community involvement is where it needs to be, as well as to urge the administration to allow this type of activity to take place for better results. If the leader of African American Studies at the University of South Alabama chose to reach out specifically to an individual who he knows can provide these specific materials, it's a sign that specific people should be a part of the process. And so while he was unable to articulate anything regarding the numbers of this, this also is why specific agencies, the community members need to be at the table. As we move forward, I hope that we can consider these ideas and that if people in the community are ready to work with certain individuals, we need to move as least to do the same. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and yield before. And Happy New Year again, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Happy New Year.
Essential COVID-19 items held over. 08911, approved purchase order to Trane US Inc. to remove and replace HVAC air handling unit at Harmon Park Recreation Center. 08912, approved item-based bid with emergency equipment professional for hydraulic forcible entry tool. 08915, approved purchase order to Autonation Ford for Ford Escape. 13916, authorized change order number two to the contract with Moffett and Nipoll for the design of Tastix Three Mile Creek Natural Channel dredging. 21917, authorized contract with Arena Fire Protection for the installation of smoke detector testing stations at the Gulf Quest Maritime Museum. 21918, authorize a contract with the University of South Alabama to complete a comprehensive cultural resources survey at the proposed site of the Africatown Welcome Center. 31919, authorized grant application to the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency grant program, Homeland Security Grant Program, no matching funds. 35920, authorized lease agreement with Mobile County for Government Plaza. 6921, approve award a special bonus to Officer of the Month for August, September, October, and November as part of the mayor's incentive program.
So moved?
Second?
It probably moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Essential COVID item, oh, essential COVID-19 items being issued for the first time. 08928 through 6940.
Mr. President, under the immediate consideration of items 37934, 935, 4936, 4937, 4938, 4939, and 6940, the remainder to hold over one week pursuant to council rules. Second?
It probably moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Okay. 37934, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Joshua Williams doing business as Malibu Transportation Service to operate a sedan service. 37935, approve certificate of public convenience and necessity to, to want a pure void doing business True Love Transportation to operate a shuttle service. 40936, 937, 938, 939, are fixing the cost for demolition of structures at 1819 Strange Street, 1804 Lacy Street, 1260 Michigan Avenue, and 459 Michigan Avenue. 6940, approve award a special bonus to Parks Department Employee of the Month.
The move?
Second?
It's been probably moved to second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Call for public hearing. 41941, call for public hearing to rezone property located at 1590 and 1574 St. Stevens Road and 1563, um, Basil, Basil Street, northwest corner of St. Stevens Road and Dunbar Street, extending to the westernmost of Basil Street from B3 and R1 to B3, scheduled January, February 2nd. 41942, call for public hearing to rezone property at 4583 Cypress Business Park Drive, west side of Cypress Business Park Drive, extending to the east side of Interstate 10 from B3 and B5 to B5, scheduled February 2nd.
Still move?
Second?
Probably moved and seconded in the discussion. Are not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings are called.
Announced.
Uh, Mr. Richardson?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to first, first of all, wish all of the citizens in District One and in the City of Mobile, um, Happy New Year, happy, blessed, safe, prosperous, uh, healthy, uh, new, new year for 20.1. On January the 1st, 1863, was the date, it was on New Year's. It's the date that the Emancipation Proclamation was issued, uh, by President Lincoln, freeing the slave in certain southern states. And, uh, that, you know, that, that's, that was, it was a major, it was a major move, uh, in, uh, eradicating, uh, slavery. It was a first major move, and then, you know, later on, uh, everybody was set free. But in the lives of African Americans, uh, January the 1st is a, is a day that we celebrate. And in that regard, I would like to recite, uh, some words from Frederick Douglass. He said, "Those who favors freedom, and yet deprecate agitation, are like those who won't find crops, but they don't want to plow the ground. They want rain, but not lightning and thunder. They want the ocean, but not the roar of its mighty waves. That man may not get all that he pays for in this world, but he must certainly pay for all that he gets." I would like to announce that the Public Safety Committee will be meeting on January 19th after the council meeting, dealing with, dealing with the issue of tattering dogs. And I have gotten lots of feedback from all across the city, from people that's interested in, in joining us, uh, in discussing, in discussing this issue. I haven't had anyone to contact me to say, um, let's not do that. People are riled up over this, and they, uh, they want some action, so, um, I have, uh, recommended that they contact the city clerk's office and, uh, and for them to be scheduled to let us, let us hear from them. I'll, I'll say this, I think the, the first meeting, uh, ought to be a meeting where we just gather information from the public on this. And the next meeting, the council will sit, will come back to say what we're going to do about it. We need to hear from them on this, on this issue. So it's going to be a time for us to listen to what everybody has got to say, and evaluate, and come back, and decide on what we, uh, want to do. But I'm looking forward to, uh, this meeting, and for those that's, that is in, uh, TV land, Facebook land, YouTube land, listening to us today, if you're interested, uh, contact the city clerk's office, and they will arrange, um, for you to say what you want to say, uh, if you want to just, uh, win, you want to, you want to just view the discussion on this issue, uh, you, you will be told how to do that. And, uh, finally, let me say that, um, leaders in Washington has announced that there will be a memorial for American lives lost during COVID-19. And they have, um, set a date, uh, January 19th. Uh, it's going to commence in Washington DC at 5:30. And they want cities across this nation to also, um, have a memorial starting at the same time, so for Mobile, that would be 4:30. And, uh, I have, uh, decided that, uh, we would, uh, in District One, and I'm asking the mayor and the council member, members to join with me, that we would have a memorial at the Tricentennial Park for all of those, um, people who died as a result of COVID-19. I guess we're up to 515, 515 people. In that regard, I have ordered, um, uh, 500 candles from Amazon. And I have asked, uh, I have reported Marion Steinfield to head, head this event up. Um, we're going to purchase 515 bags, white bags. We're going to put the battery lit candles inside the bag. We're going to number the bag according to the number of people who've already died. And we now want to solicit from the public the names of those who passed. In this regard, I'm going to need the council and the mayor to, to help with this, because we, uh, I'm going to send a letter out to all of the churches in District One, but I don't have, I don't have that information, um, on, of the council districts. If, if you have such a list in your district, I wish you'd give it to me. And I have Marion to draft a letter to send out to all churches to say that we, we have requested names, that you give us the name of, of your friend, family member, loved one, whoever, or we just want the name, and then we're going to put the name on the bags. And as you walk around, Charlie, as you walk around the perimeter of the park, as you walk, it's real around the park, we're going, we're going to station the bags all the way around, they're going to be lit up, uh, they can walk around, and we're going to have a, a sign up there with all of the numbers on it, and you can look up there and see what number your loved one is, whether it's number 60, or 50, or 40, you can see, so you don't have to be wondering which bag, we're going to have it all up there, uh, on the, on the board, where when you come into the park, you will see, uh, from 1 to 518, or whatever the number is, and the name and the, and the number, however the, I, where, where they, where they will be placed around the pool. So, um, I expect this to be, um, part of the national honoring, uh, uh, memorizing all of those who died from COVID-19, and, um, requesting solicit to port, do support from the mayor and the councilman, and helping me, uh, give these names, and to, at 4:30, to come down and help greet the family members who are coming, uh, to go around and see, uh, the bag with their loved ones' name on it. And I want Marion to get going today, uh, on this, uh, get, uh, whatever we need, whatever it is that we need to do, I know we're going to need a bag, I know we're going to need some sand to go in the bag. I've already talked to, um, the Director of Parks and Recreation, Shonda Smith, to let her know, let us know what we are doing over there. She said she was going to get back with me within how this you may have only, but that is what, what, what we are planning to do, and I want to share that with you and ask you all to support. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Williams?
Happy New Year.
Mr. Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, wish my colleagues and my constituents of District 3 and the City of Mobile, uh, Happy New Year. Looking forward to working with the mayor and administration, my colleagues, along with the citizens of District 3 to make this, this year for a greater year than it has been in the past years. Even though we had experienced some great years, some good years in the past several years, but we've got better and greater things, days ahead of us. Um, just can't wait to get back to some type of normacies before we can start back our community meetings, um, and et cetera. I'm scheduled to take the vaccine shot real soon. So, um, you know, I'm encouraging everyone who can, you know, as soon as you can, to go ahead and just take it, because it's, you know, the quicker that we all try to get vaccinated, the quicker that we get back to some type of normacy. And I understand some people have some fear about taking the vaccine, but, you know, as I tell many people, technology today is too advanced to really just to sit down and just worry about that. If you have the Vice President of the United States and President-elect to go ahead and take it, you know, it's, you know, may not, should not be too much fear there. But, uh, looking to work again with the citizens this year, um, to make this, uh, district and the city more greater than they have ever been. And again, Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice President, and I certainly echo your sentiments. Ms. Gregory?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I too want to wish everyone a very Happy New Year and look forward to working with everyone as we go forward into 2021. And, um, as the mayor said earlier, one of the first things that happened in my district was, um, the construction starting on Ziegler Boulevard, the widening project. Heavy equipment has been moved in, signage has gone up. So for a lot of the residents who live up and down Ziegler, they probably didn't believe that it was actually going to happen until they saw the equipment move in. Now, uh, they know it's a reality, and, um, work, we really should start seeing some heavy-duty work coming up in the next couple of weeks. I've sent letters out to residents explaining the project and letting them know that there will be some, you know, traffic slowdowns and that kind of thing, because you can't have a, a project of this size with, without experiencing some of those things. But, um, again, the, the progress, um, will be, I, I think it's, it's the pardon our progress kind of thing, you know, where, um, it, it takes a little bit of work and maybe some frustrations and some time and effort, but the end result will be so worth it. So again, Ziegler Boulevard widening project getting kicked off first thing here in 2021. Uh, also, this afternoon at 2 o'clock, we will have an Administrative Services Committee meeting. We will be continuing our discussion on, uh, short, short-term rentals. We started this, uh, earlier in 2020 and hit a snag, so now we are basically starting over. We've got, um, a draft, a couple of draft proposals that Chris Aldridge has prepared for us, and, um, we'll be discussing our options this afternoon and going forward from there. So again, 2 o'clock via Zoom, uh, on short-term rentals. Thank you.
Mr. Rich?
Thank you very much. Um, again, I'd like to send condolences to the West family, all of his friends, and, um, the mayor and the administration on his passing, and also to the Wolf family and, um, all of the members of his congregation and his associates, um, um, in his passing due to COVID. And speaking of COVID, my heart, my heart goes out to all of the families that have lost loved ones in the course of this COVID disease, and also to everyone who has battled it, or in currently battling it, or who have, uh, come through the pandemic by exactly experiencing the virus. Again, um, you know, we're, we'll have everybody on our thoughts. On January 26th, um, we talked about this a little bit, the utilities, um, will give us an update, and this is through the Public Service Committee. This will be at 2 o'clock, it's a Tuesday, and, um, we'll also, we have been expanding this now to talk about poor conditions and line conditions, and, um, I'm going to ask, um, that Chris Aldridge, if it's okay, if you could get ahold of someone in the administration, if there is a chief electrician, um, if they could be present, or someone who has filling that role, since that's part of an, um, um, I guess, regulations on handling these public services that sit in the city's rights of way, or anyone in the administration, um, Chris, that you could ask to come to the table to, uh, enlighten this committee on how we can go about to ensure that these, um, poles that are either, we started talking about abandoned ones, but now we're talking about the conditions of the poles, and, um, who we would need to outreach to, to get, make sure that those things are all in good, um, I guess, good order, so to speak. Um, and also, uh, and by wishing everyone a very happy and healthy New Year, um, hoping that 2021 is some, it light years ahead of 2020, but we still have a lot of things that we're all, um, keeping on our minds. And again, I wish everyone all the best, good health being number one. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Mr. Joel Thomas-Dave?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to extend my condolences to Paul's wife, Linda, and his entire family on their irreplaceable loss. I first met Paul almost 40 years ago, when he came to practice law with me and my partners. At that time, he had just graduated from law school at the University of Alabama and was pursuing an advanced degree in taxation, which involved studying at night and on weekends and periodic travel to Tuscaloosa in addition to his practice of the law. He didn't mind hard work then or later in his life. At the university, he had been involved, Paul had been involved in student politics, an interest he also carried with him as he grew older. But Paul never sought the spotlight himself. He was content to work in the background, providing critical support to candidates he felt worthy of the office they sought, or causes he felt appropriate and just. Paul was a shrewd judge of character. He was always even-tempered. I never saw him angry or frustrated, even when events turned out other than he wished, or individuals failed to act as he thought they should, he would just keep moving forward. After a career in business where he earned the admiration and respect of his colleagues and business associates, he joined Mayor Stimson's team in 2013 as Finance Director. The recession had left the city's reserve depleted. We were spending almost nothing on our aging, deteriorating infrastructure, and our credit rating was close to being downgraded. Today, the city's reserve is $60 million. Our credit rating is secure, and we are spending tens of millions of dollars a year on infrastructure and improvement. Paul didn't do it all by himself. The mayor, his administration, city council, and the city employees all had a hand in the remarkable turnaround, but Paul was the guiding light for it. So we say farewell to Paul Charles West, a friend and a colleague who we greatly admire, and say well done to a good and faithful public servant who I will miss greatly. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. What a moving and fulfilling tribute, and certainly, uh, the life and legacy hard work of Mr. Paul West deserves that and much more. We're just grateful to have had the opportunity to, to work with him and be associated with him. I want to extend and say to all the citizens of District 2 that might be viewing this meeting, Happy New Year. I believe that this year will be one of the better years that we've had, I believe the best is yet to come. I believe the best is yet to come. The work on Broad Street is steadily moving southward, and hopefully we'll be starting soon on the avenue. And a total rebuild of Texas Street hopefully will kick off in April of this year. And so that's just a lot of capital infrastructure improvements that we will be hopefully starting or either finishing over the next, over the coming months. A lot to be proud of, a lot to be thankful for, and grateful to have another year to, to work toward bettering this city. So that concludes my announcements. Any further announcements? If not, do I hear most?
Moved to adjourn?
Second.
Been properly moved to second, and we would adjourn this particular meeting and a discussion. You hear no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
My, my internet connection is frozen, so I'm going to have to end this session, and then I'll come back. I'll, I'll just re-sign on, and everybody's going to have to sign back in.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Because if I refresh it, it's going to kick everybody off.
But we're not starting till two, right?
That's right.
Oh, till two. Okay, good. Sorry. Bye.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
You coming back at two? Are you going to do it from your office?
I'm going to do it. Dang, I got a dang, thing on my face that won't stop bleeding.
Uh-uh. You tear off a piece of the napkin and put it like, you know, if you cut yourself shaving.
It's like, it's not even a shaving thing. It's like, been there for three months, and every time I hit it, it starts bleeding.
Or something.
Yeah, I guess. I'm going to need to cauterize it.
My God. Here, let us brandy. Go, try to go by the drugstore, get one of those Stiptick pencils, you know?
What is it?
It's called a Stiptick pencil. It's over by the men's shaving.
Stiptick pencil.
Yeah. And you put it on there, and it basically, it's, you know, like if you just nuke yourself.